Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Expedition All Too. Our minister here, I think all the others, facility, protect and see that there's one other thing going on. So here we are, X two, the Pope Don't Harry, a couple of panelists. I want to call the May twenty first, twenty twenty four, February thirty morning, the orders of Callwood, Andrew, Perry, and of George Perkins, and the Pope Don't Harry is in the place.
Father Perkins, our Father God in heaven, we come down to God, honor for your brother. We thank you, God, for how you blessed us and kept us, so God, we thank you, God.
Well, as you've done with us, we thank you, God, for our lives, for our diseases. Protect our home, and oh, give us some use for a day. As long as we're in this world, I would, we may handle this, thank you for what we do. And we make better community, better county, even better city. And we ask you, God, to look on those people, God, from six to seven, to bless them, God, in our life. Then so God, we give you the power, you should, God, you know, we get, you know, anything, you know, suffering, we take on, we be a wonderful. We ask you, God, to look upon our nation, God, look on those people, God, and rule our nation. They will take the best they will, God, and bring them on to the other side, to follow the direction. And you got to ask you, God, to look on those people, God, best, and follow them, God, and find them for us, so God. Even if they take your home, bless them, take them with the faith of goodness. You also need to pray to God, and pray to God.
Let's please display the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with everything that is for all. Okay, first on the agenda. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the May seventh, twenty twenty four, favor, February, and the May eleventh, twenty twenty four, emergency. Questions, comments, concerns, on those? Most of you approve, most of you approve, our President White, second by Commissioner Perkins, all of favor, aye?
Aye.
All of those same time, most of you carry five to zero. Next on the agenda is the public concern and comments. Anybody from the public here who's interested in that, yes, I'm Mr. Rogers. Welcome, sir. Amen, Mr. Rogers, we all know you, Father Rogers.
Keith Rogers, living at two oh one, Rancho Street, North West, here in La Bola, Florida. Now, two things to mention, number one, I have my Constitution class this coming Saturday at the City Hall. We're going to be focusing in on the Declaration of Independence and Bill of Rights. I encourage everyone to attend. We have a responsibility, the federal government, frankly, the Constitution was written to govern, to govern, not to govern the people, but not to infringe on our rights, and to protect our rights. And that's why this, this weekend is going to be really good. It's going to be again, on the eighteen principles of powers that were granted to Congress, and the five powers that were granted to the President. And any power that was not delegated or enumerated in the Constitution is strictly prohibited. And yet, we, the people, have failed to do our job. The government has run amok, not because of anybody other than ourselves. We have a responsibility to hold them accountable. And if we fail to do so, then we have no one to blame but ourselves. The other thing I'll mention to you is that on the Fourth of July, at the Freedom Fest, we're going to be able to have an opportunity for people to get a free copy of the Constitution, Pocket Edition, and give people a chance to play some of my constitutional games and activities. So, please attend, thank you.
Mr. Rogers, before you leave, I saw Mr. Rogers on Saturday, and he mentioned to me, and I'm going to share it now with these guys, because I had a talk to him, and also for the other boards that you mentioned. Can you hear Mr. Rogers?
You bet.
Okay. Do you like, for, at some point, to have some type of workshop for our board, the school board, the city board, to do, do one of these classes, you know, for the name of the weeknight, and you're not talking about that? So, he's keeping that idea around, and maybe trying to get the three boards together. Obviously, it could be a public real life as well, you know, do it sometime also, probably gather, and we put that. Mr. Rogers is working on that, just wanted to point that out, y'all, and any other boards, or everyone that may be here, we walked tonight.
And Mr. Rogers, what time is that on Saturday?
Saturday, the Freedom Fest, I think, he said it was six o'clock, they'll, fireworks go off, so it's about six o'clock on the.
This Saturday, two P M.
Okay, thank you, please.
Just may I, Mr. Rogers? Sir?
Just one, yeah.
Okay. Um, next time, all of this is considered, and another four and one, I'm trying to file, number six. Number six is being pulled for discussion, so we have items number two, two, three, two, three, four, five, seven, and eight. On the agenda. I'm most by Commissioner White. I'll be Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Hale, all of favor, aye? Aye, all of those same time, most of you carry five to zero. Oh, and I have number six, guys, I'm kind of turning about this to my attention, and just want to do all the statistics, and we're trying to keep what you told me.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the Valley Adjustment Board, I'm still a member of the Valley Adjustment Board, man, this, for the United Valley Adjustment Board.
Be closer to the right.
May I say the Valley Adjustment Board, managing manager, for acceptance of this position, anyhow. And also got a board through the county, over there today. It used to be the Valley Adjustment Boards would appoint their own chairperson, amongst themselves, has been found to be, maybe a bit, so essentially, the chairman of the Valley Adjustment Board has to be appointed by the county commissioner. It also needs to be elected by the county commissioner, so it's chairman. I know it's on the agenda today, too, to, to manage the county commissioner, and people are going to join the Valley Adjustment Board for this term. And it also makes it hard back, which one wants to be chairman?
So, with, I mean, I started as, I started on the V E board for four or four years now, and the chair in the last two, so I don't know, I don't know, again. I mean, I work shop a little bit, and that's definitely what I thought we'd say, and. I'm always so hungry, huh? I'm always so hungry, you're always bringing me.
So, I think it's good, Mr. Chairman, to make it clear for what actor, decisions, they have one board action, so point of two, and separate board action, and board point.
And we, in the, in the packet, so a point was Commissioner Black, Commissioner Land, Commissioner Perkins, remaining, that's all the positions have been brought up. So, if anyone wants to make a motion on that, we have the same opinion. I wish by Commissioner Molly, and second by Commissioner Perkins, for those appointments, as Commissioner White, and Land, as regular members, and Commissioner Perkins, and Commissioner Perkins, and that's all. All of their ayes, all of those same time, now, when you say the motion, it would be the chair, am I chair, or just the chair? Chair is the, sits in the room, so the chair. I wish by Commissioner Molly, for myself, Commissioner Land, you remaining chair of V E board. I would, second by Commissioner Perkins, all of their ayes, all of those same time. Most of you carry five to zero, this, that. Okay, so next on the agenda is a constitutional officer, I don't know if constitutional officers here tonight, who should speak? Seeing, um, we want to do staff items, need staff, who should speak? Chief Hane, welcome, sir. Yeah, this all the way in the back, huh?
Yeah, so far, far back on this, sir. Chairman, Commissioner, I just wanted to bring to your attention, and also our community, Dixie County, we need to keep Dixie County fire rescue, and our, and our awesome prayers. One of the Italian chiefs, Andy English, was missing for a few days, since he was just found deceased early or late last night. They're going to do some touchdowns down there, so our R and R is, just informing you guys, our R and R, the men down there, assist them, they just aren't the kind of guards, so they're, they're kind of awesome in where the league goes, or they're down building that. And a couple of our guys went down today to help cover some shifts, because they're just, they're having a tough time, and not able to respond to calls, so. So, we're coming down that way, so just, just wanted to let everybody know, please, keep, keep them, and Mr. Chairman, his family, and awesome prayers, because they, they all need it.
Yeah, I would prefer you, and Andy, who's back in town, can, so they, it's, maybe with our, and Eddie, and Chris, and so on, and then from the R A, and the past few years, so he, and it appears, that, you know, there's, have to be, you know, the guys.
And we'll, we'll have a couple of guys going down on Saturday during the circus as well, to help cover trucks, so all of their, all of their staff can attend the funeral, for, for, for. We had that happen with Chiefs, other fast, we had local, they just kind of, they're lost, so.
Appreciate you guys.
Paying the favor forward.
Appreciate you guys, send them, you know, one, and you're going to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Chief, please, sir.
Just, uh, two things real quick, I guess you've seen that the cross and the flag display is up on one twenty nine, if you haven't been through there, take a look, it's a beautiful thing. Uh, we appreciate the community support, I think we're around eight hundred and sixty-three crosses after this time around. Uh, tomorrow is a memorial service at Westwood, Memorial Day service at Westwood Baptist Church at nine. Uh, if you got a chance, please come and attend that, I'll be the speaker, I don't know if that's good or bad, but I'll be there. And lastly, I just want to thank you guys for last year, for two years ago approval of our light scan, for our public safety people. Uh, if the public didn't know, and I don't know if all of you know, this time around, we had two employees who were facing very major medical issues. Uh, one of them ended up being okay, the other ended up having surgery to remove cancer, and it's probably saved his life. Uh, so I wanted to thank y'all personally, and also thank you for allowing us to include our employee assistance program, and our mental health evaluations that we do now. We've had several critical incidents in the last few months, and we send those deputies for an appointment after those critical incidents, because in today's world, we've got to worry about mental health as well as we do physical health. That's where I want you guys to realize, we truly appreciate you, and that's the value of you guys standing behind us as well. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for that. Employees are your greatest asset, and if we don't take care of them physically and mentally, we fail them, and I just want to say thank you. Outside of that, status quo, I would.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate you sharing that, thanks for coming. Any other staff dogs? Saying, you know, we're down to the commissioner, I was in the commissioner's, I'm going to discuss.
Okay, I want to update, um, thank you guys for the, uh, approving the smaller task force, uh, that's new, swiftly, so we should have that all that together, and we're down on the show. Look, we're updating, you guys, if you have any to see about us, and this, and the other thing, Ms. Miranda, I don't know if she's here, but I was on the traffic safety meeting, for Columbia, Fayetteville, Hamilton, and Swanee today, and she did a great job, her presentation, represent the Swanee County, and really out there fighting for some of the things we need here in Swanee County, and our roadways, so kudos to her.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, and, and, yes, sir, Chris Rogers.
I just want to come out there with that, I got something to say, before finding, um, that those that, for me, and, uh, she can do this, and the workers, and that's taken, uh, they might work with farms, labels, there is, uh, a land out there, and has to be that information that will give that those workers, actually, even shit. And that's something that they're, you know, I know that's, I have a lot of work with farmers, or, they're, maybe that's a negative incident, and, uh, yeah, we hear, I think it's, I'm sure, would be here in Toronto, uh, sadly, uh, this is.
Is that only through the state, or through the federal?
Sure.
Federal, no?
Yeah, that, federal, and, and, and those, people that are, um, doing, it's kind of, COVID, and, and, this is.
So, did you just, uh, call the career shot here, or you have a, a, or a?
I, I, even, even, they, so, yeah, we, they, 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 so, so, kind of, true, but it's not, so, you know, just, so, they, 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 they.
...who would not be exempt, would be reimbursed with interest. And also would pay off any taxing that they've been issuing on the property. And then it would be going to follow some process that would be going to offer that. That vacant and fire assessment would be subject to vacant land controlled by nonprofits or churches. So that's a long-winded way of explaining that, but to benefit everybody, that's kind of the policy. But if it's the determination board, that is an unwarranted policy, that is how we go about this.
All members, any questions for Mr. Morris on that?
I'm going to ask Mr. Morris, uh, do we have any idea what the number is?
Uh, it's not a lot, actually. I spoke with Mr. Hamill this morning to get some kind of CD, give me a little bit of insight. It's less than thirty parcels and the total assessment would be a dot on a year. I didn't have time to pull the full number, but kind of going with the eight years alone, I'd say so. But it's certainly less than five thousand probably per year and probably less than two thousand in terms of the total amount of money that comes from fires.
Is it up to the county to decide new property, nonprofits, churches, or do they have to come to the county and ask for it?
No, that, so that's what we're sure to, we prepare that tax law. So every year, actually, in previous years, about four years ago, it was kind of something on its own, and people were like, "Nah, we don't want them." They didn't prepare that tax law for us. But essentially, we take the jumping off point, how is everybody, how are people categorized with property creators' office? We use that as a jumping off point, and then it kind of set that down to a point to the property. And so there's part of it vacant, part of it not, which part of it has, there's kind of a part that doesn't, that's sort of one. And so that is their determination to make it. But it's one single twenty-seven dollar assessment, whether you have a hundred acres vacant land or point oh one acres vacant. So the policy required costs.
Any other questions?
If you say vacant land, does that mean there's, there's no, or there's some of them vacant, he was there, he was with or without it?
Um, I'm going to say this is ten years old. It's categorized as vacant. That really, that would imply that it's vacant, whether it's wrong or not, it is vacant, but it doesn't necessarily mean it is because we actually have sometimes, you know, those acres, some of them are not registered, planning, performing, some of them can be built. So it's, it's vacant for purposes of these assessments, so that's why we've got to try to phrase that. So anything that's within the meaning of vacant for purposes of the county's fire assessment and is owned by a nonprofit or church, would we have what we're talking about?
They own, own that too, that is, is church. But I'm glad you told me, because that, if the church owns the property, if they, if they use the property, wants to marry somebody, they're going to pay it off, they're going to pay the property, then they're, they can be considered.
Well, again, that's where it is, this is the same state of the church, right? There's a difference between, you're absolutely correct, for purposes of the charitable use, tax deduction, that's not what we're talking about here, but we're talking about a fire assessment, which is entirely different thing. But the bill fee comes from the same tax collector, and that's what it means. So, again, so that, that's your, and that, that is, that means, that means your...
So, I got another question.
Oh, I'm, I'm giving my example, um, I have a particular, I have a pastor local church colony. Their, their church over there, the first day, they did the taxes, forty-seven dollars for vacant land. This one is vacant, and they join this church, so if they use it for parking and overflow, maybe future extension, they're exempt from having all the federal taxes. Solid, like you said, one hundred and zero, all, all thirteen or whatever, and free the vacant. What, what, why we have twenty-seven dollars and get by a cent, they won't pay taxes, and so they go to America, see their church, and they still, they're working, they're wanting to pay taxes. They won't technically pay taxes, because they're vacant land by a cent, twenty-seven dollars. Um, so this is, that's like a tax, but I just want to share, the whole, you really have a lot to wrap last.
Yeah.
If I can add to this, also, I know I have one commission, I have this, and five of this, and I wanted to publicly thank you, Adam, for doing the legwork. You can leave it out, and let's see if it's correct, if I'm definitely having a favor of, uh, just what Commissioner Landy said, it came out over a year ago. It's something that we've been pursuing, working, and only have our people put it out to see yourself, but, uh, just for his, my example is, especially when they bought the city, maybe the expansion of a graveyard. Or maybe it's going in over for, for parking or something like that, which just landed the church in that, and then they grew, and then they needed for another thing, but right now it's nothing, it's just there. And, uh, it's there, it's, um, probably, and they're just having, uh, I see. I've heard anything from standing a graveyard, to standing a church, to standing a museum, that an outdoor area, or just had nothing.
And that's what the confusion was in, because they're being granted the exemption, the charitable use exemption by property creator. So far, there's never been anyone paying taxes here, so it's just a little...
But as an assessment, it's not actually, well, they have more taxes.
But it's almost as a tax law.
Correct, so they have to file it in open, and we're not assessing it, correct, uh, for record, and then initially, thank you, so. I'm just pulling it out, and do a motion, a second, a motion.
So, I think first, we need to do this in two steps. First would be, this will change the policy, so that a effective, immediate, and retroactive, which will happen here, uh, it's the decision of the board to, uh, no longer, uh, kind of fire assessments against vacant land owned by churches or other charitable organizations. So, you know, just, uh, the second thing would be, you're right.
Knowing that the angle, you know, the, the angle was, the tax is significant, but by now we're left, regardless of two thousand, I just said, because that, that vacant land assessment is exactly so relevant right now, so. If this one ever, wouldn't pay another thousand, one around the world, who has the mind, uh, who knows about churches, I'm in support of that, but you change the motion.
I'm only a motion.
Okay.
A motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Perkins, all pay or eye?
Eye.
All votes sent out, motion carries, uh, zero.
And then the second thing, Mr. Terrence, we need the board to authorize SAT action to first issue a NEI to the tax collector office, to, since we're special activity, everyone that involves, authorize the tax collector to take the order to write the action, we need refunding those charitable organizations, churches that have vacant assessment, and also therefore go through and clean up any tax certificates or any information that would be paid off or, uh, whatever, or back taxes, and then, and it gets a lot of that too, it's a necessary, or we'll check to ensure that back taxes are paid.
That was much enough, the longest I've ever heard.
That's fair. Mr. Murray, can I, can I run for right?
Thank you.
Not just, uh, not just the this, but it hasn't, we only did assessing it against, uh, I mean, these would have gone out, it hasn't always been this way, so people, all the news about it. Nothing changed practically in terms of how our fire assessments were worded, or the bills, or anything like that. What changed was, when the preparation of the tax law for that, uh, for our fire assessment changed from county's acting to the neighbor's dealing department. They, they saw, they knew what they were supposed to do, we said, hey, build a vacant land, and deal. That was triggering, so nothing's changed, uh, but it's a way to authorize it. We're going to change our policy, so that when the neighbors dealing goes back through, you know, for the next year, that is now part of our policy. So technically, the policy would back in for two years, that would be retroactive, and doing, um, but as a practical matter, we're willing to, the neighbors dealing started preparing that back. It's something that must...
Mr. Trump, you know, at least about four years.
And it's kind of good now, because there's actually on the church, but...
Maybe they last four years, they had a tax fee on the, or even, no?
Well, unless, unless the first one, the deed was, where they had an interest in our lands, and they may have actually filed a tax fee, they're just sitting there collecting the, they do, they all...
There's so many, that's the company that others, when they came in, I've heard about a lot of tax certificates, and I didn't, that everybody filed a tax.
I just want to turn into a quiet minor, we're going back so far, they were bringing a bunch of staff on, people with...
It's, uh, that is, uh, Commissioner Clay, um, again, I'm just being, Mr. Hamill, I'm trying to make this practical work, so, Mr. Hamill already said that with, uh, uh, the tax collector office, it's, it's a stage of this whole action, and, again, Mr. Hamill is very, I don't know if you're correct, but they were already there for this action, not to be that big deal, because they're going to pay it out, get funding funds, so it's, but I'm going to go back to research, uh, history, which is going to be, and then again, because the mountain's just one, that's practical, I already...
Well, I'm only concerned about, I don't believe in, um, if, and forever and ever, never, but all we can determine would be, is if we limit it to say two years, or three years, or four years, what if one of those companies sells that tax certificate to someone who does go file for a tax fee on the church? Now you got fired. Um, but I, but I don't want to affect it, or I don't want us to go back ten years, and then, like, I don't know, that, that probably goes like that far, I think four might cover it.
I would go five.
I, I don't think five would do much.
I think that, as a practical matter, not legally, because legally, you're doing it the whole time, but as a practical matter, legally, it'll cover it.
No, I'm not going to be, be retroactive for that, I'm offering, I'm offering a...
Yeah, so issue the NEI, uh, all of our counties have to, issue the NEI, which is basically a correctional or two tax collector office to correct, and that being in form of reading versions of the, the, the assessment, and then, uh, take a retroaction, this is, this is...
And I, I have a motion, a second, but there's plans to public, so basically what the tax collector will do, they'll use county funds to, anyone that's forming those certificates out there that could file for a tax fee on the church, they're going to pay those off, and take those back, and then, give them back, so they'll be wiped out, and it's null and null and none, so then no one can come and say, "I'm filing for a tax fee, and Mr. Hamill coughed, so, I'm on that, turn, turn, turn," or something like that. They'll, they'll pay those off for those companies that could be, hope, so that that piece you go for. Great, which one?
Go ahead.
I got a motion, I got a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Molly, all pay or eye?
Eye.
All votes sent out.
And then just a third one, to make it clear, that as a purpose of activity, uh, that a project that we have, or we use to not assess, um...
So, they, they are...
They have vacant fire assessments in churches, and, um, charitable organizations, and all of our staff, we need to pay that to, we need to deal in firms that, uh, where they're preparing that act of this year.
A motion by Perkins, a second by Commissioner Molly, all pay or eye?
Eye.
All votes sent out, and Mr. Perkins, I'll see you around the court.
That's all I have, Mr. Terrence.
Thank you, Mr. Terrence. Um, consultant advocate, if all things serious, this is good time. Uh, no, this is somewhere out on that, this also possible war action, planning holidays, you know? Do you have any other questions?
Sure. Well, after you come to comment, we'll start, and then we'll, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, okay. Put you on the comment, anybody know, um, anybody here from publicists and C D corps, I don't know, discussing, and holidays? See you, Ron.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I, I, Mr. Trump?
Well, I'm sorry, any? Vote stuff one, four, five, eight, one, hundred, second, and I vote, this is a good example, if y'all would think of getting a public opportunity like you used to be, uh, me coming up here might not be necessary, but it's clear that I won't be saying nothing, and y'all will go through, although it's a good example, I love, uh, the funds from government, I just say, uh, putting living on what could happen, that's protecting, good for the, uh, nonprofits, and protecting citizens, three, I, I like it, happen, I get, but it might not always, uh, I'm not sure, I read the back records on this item. The, uh, the county currently, if I'm not wrong, pays eleven, uh, holidays, am I correct? Uh, the state pays nine, that don't, from past history, me bringing up here what the state does, and what this county does, don't seem to matter here, but it matters to me. I, uh, I, I think we're already exceeding what the state does, so we're, we're already back in that platinum area again. Can, the, the four people of this county, which we are below the average income in this county, are already paying the county workers more than the state average is. So, uh, I think the, are y'all, are y'all thinking about removing one? If you are, that's one thing, but there's a whole bunch, you know, the family of our nation, the first president, George Washington, he, he got a holiday. Uh, Abraham Lincoln, he ain't got a holiday. Uh, there's a whole bunch of holidays that could be, that, uh, ain't represented, but the big, the workers already got eleven days. Unless y'all thinking about taking one of these off, which I don't see, one that simply taken away. But if we ain't watching it, they're going to be taken December twenty-fifth away, if we keep going in the direction of that other way. So, anyway, I think what, what the county is getting right now is probably eleven, eleven, if we really want to do twelve, and, and, uh, and replacing any of these days, I don't see a point in that either, so, thank you.
Thank you, Congressman, and to be clear, the, the, to discuss, um, the consideration, just per obvious, for the public, those didn't have a general package. This is very instructive, uh, USCC code resolution is attached to add Juneteenth day as a particular holiday, so, um, to answer your question, it's not taken away to add, unless, well, it is not, I have a good question.
Just in case, would somebody suggest to replace it?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Um, so, anyone else from publicists and C D? Yes, sir, Mr. Hughes, and I address for that, it's, uh...
Seventeen seventeen, North East Davis Street, down the floor.
Got it.
I feel that...
Name.
Kimpy.
There you go, thank you, sir.
I feel that we deserve, that Juneteenth holiday, because like I said, I gave my research only, all the other surrounding towns already got that in place, and after the federal holiday, which we brought up in twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken, and I feel that the county should take some issue with giving us a holiday.
Thank you, and great comment, Mr. Hughes. Anyone else from the public?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kimper?
Yes, that right.
Well, I'm sorry, any additional record?
Mark Kipper, uh, two-two-one-eight-two, hundred and one-two-fifteen, line over for... First, I'd like all the vets that are here, all because we've got Memorial Day coming in February, uh, give, I'd like to say, you get a...
Office is on hand.
Sure. So anyways, like you say, you know, I mean, uh, uh, Memorial Day is not sales, not vacations, not vacation days, it's for the people that gave it all. I gave some, but some people gave it all, and that's really what Memorial Day is, just like...
Yes, it's a very holiday, June, June, uh, fourteenth. Yeah, you know, that's that holiday, uh, I didn't know, um, there aren't any sold, nothing parked, okay? When we stop and realize what people did, okay, I think it's a different holiday. I mean, what do you, I think it's a different holiday that should be followed, I'm sorry, I'm a taxpayer, you know, but I'm nervous about it. I'm nervous who gave it, okay, that was in another era, sir, I got it, okay, but I'm not just terrible, okay, and basically, except Black Wall Street, okay, and people died, all, and they... Does everybody know what that is, by the way? Do you report anything?
Do you?
I'm trying to do anything?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I mean, that is the time where people just stand out and wipe out all the time, for no reason at all, because, right, that's stupid. Okay, but then yet now, all right, same blood, same blood, same everything. There's no bias just in, in the army, so we shoot each other, so we're going to shoot the right way, okay, that's all. So, I, I think, I think we should reconsider, okay, as time off, and whether, uh, well, first of all, the police are always on it, so they're basically always on it. The fire department is always on it, okay, so we're talking about a limited amount of staff, and sometimes, like you say, I would say it for it. Sometimes when they're doing that, they're giving credit for it, so if there's someone even giving credit for it that are on it, I have no objection to that. I think that that holiday was totally discussed, okay, we don't talk my school, I grew up in the fifties, but I was up north, in California, but, uh, you know, I think your body tells you, you know, a month or so, you know, it turned out to be a three month, that was terrible, it was absolutely terrible. So I think there should be honor, I think there should be a holiday on it, and whether you want to take one off, put one on, yeah, I, I would go, I would be a taxpayer, I would be a taxpayer, and I would take that holiday, let it live.
Thank you, Mr. Kimper, comment. Anyone else from publicists and C D? See, no, we want the S A F commission.
Just, just a couple things, um, like your initial forward...
Scott, you didn't, you didn't include it.
No, 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 we're discussing it. Um, I think you said it, discussing it.
Yeah.
Just, just a little review, um, I know that, uh, the state does not recognize the holiday, and they've got nine holidays that they have currently, we've got eleven, um, there's probably other holidays that, uh, some people would like to take, I want to just credit the value of this holiday, or any other holiday. Probably the employees who want to take a day for holiday would be this holiday, or religious holiday, or whatever, we have any days you could take, um, for my management piece, you know, early days now. You know, addition days, space, away from the work, um, but, I want to just credit the, you know, intent of the holiday, that it has value, but, um, to watch on, uh, what we don't do, but, um, it's a, we, we're all in the state, um, you know, we're, 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 we're hard, and it's from the, uh, but, um, just for the record, we take as much as about seventy-four thousand dollars for holiday.
How much?
About seventy-four thousand, um, we're kind of looking at this as such, um, but, I think there's more, that's, we're all calling, I mean, I'm, I'm, it's, it's...
It's a good one, but he wants to add it, and we're in our policy, he has to will, but often they pick one, well, they want to pick, they still choose to pick that holiday instead of New Year's, you do it.
They, they would encourage them, and we would always review that, but, uh, she had to, or they want to take that, then offer another holiday, um, they're assisting with that, but you can see the options, so, I mean, it's...
Mr. Turner? Uh, Mr. Perkins? Juneteenth is the national day that was, uh, was, I think, was, I think, that was, she was, uh, she, she was, she did that, uh, the national holiday, the Juneteenth, the June nineteenth, they call it Juneteenth. Uh, this was the day that the Declaration of Populations was signed in Jackson, Texas, it was signed, but in this year, where we are, the Declaration of Populations was signed in January, uh, May twenty-eighth, eight-one-six-five. This is not an arbitrary year, it took the, uh, the US Department of Labor, the Department of Forces, here, the gaps, to get there in time, to let them know that it's signed, you know, face. Um, but it's a national holiday. But I, I was looking at here, and I was trying to buy the whip, is that, well, we have some days here that's, uh, double day pass, instead of having, uh, but it was twenty about July fourth, and that field. If you take one day, but July fourth, there's a field, or you take it from November twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth, say from Thursday to twenty-eighth, and then the year of twenty-ninth, or that's what you're not adding, you're always, uh, take one day from Thanksgiving, and remove that to, uh, Juneteenth, so that's one I was, I was aware of. So that's your day that's, you know, you have Thursday, Friday, uh, Tuesday, and then you do such one of those days for a holiday.
Mr. Turner, actually, I can answer that, I'm a little one, um, those holidays, for example, I'm not saying anything about the lives and the policies, uh, the state mandates holiday, it's our holiday, and so, for example, Thursday and Friday, Thanksgiving is the state's holiday, and we're, uh, for the state of here, um, and... So, a lot of those two days are passing down from, I don't know, because, kind of falls in the weekend, so, so...
Do you want to just say that we can't, we don't have discretion, because it's a state holiday, we don't have the discretion, but tell me this, I know we're off, we're...
We wanted the Thursday and the State, and kind of the purpose that is the Friday after Thanksgiving, and remove that as holiday, we can't do that, because I think I can just say, um...
Mr. Turner? Yeah, what, what did, did you give the total amount of, what the policy for holiday?
Seventy-four thousand.
So, uh, they need to, uh, the, the, the...
Well, then, well, then, could I ask Keith, that he had a number of the finance, and I do, so, um, if he, if he put it what I asked, um, I would, I would still be wrong, and I'm, I'm always questioning it.
He's here, my boy, so, no, uh...
Yeah, that can be, that's true, I just figured, that's what I figured, yeah.
Yeah, the session been rolling, and I did, and I'm...
Especially, Mr. Parker, I just appreciate you for trying to help us, and maybe you, you know, some of the boxes, for sure.
I mean, I, I see that, you know, you have a table, uh, simple.
No, yes, sir.
I'm not saying that, when they're constantly with the lady already, that's getting paid, uh. Um, I was just saying, we're kind of, we're coming soon, or whatever, we use that day, but obviously, it could, uh, it's not a key, okay? What, uh, for, uh, bringing the body, I didn't say holiday. I know that the city also recognized it, and I'm not sure if they, the city has, it also, uh, phone the county, county, they recognize that day as well, they say, uh, adopted, uh, Juneteenth as their holiday. I'm not sure the normal day, but I'm just, they, they would be very, very, probably holiday.
Well, then, uh, I think, Mr. Parker, I think what you were saying there, maybe we need to stay a little closer and see, you know, if our days were like the days, and it's, they're aging, about the noon and nine, I'm not sure, whether to say average. That's what you got, uh. I want to be clear about everybody, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, definitely want to be clear, I, I did realize what Mr. Parker said was pretty, I was sitting playing against the match, but I'm still, I would, it's a, it's a holiday, you know. So, we, uh. So, the two, I mean, the early two days are not looking for, such a kind of, as I was saying, but. Those are two.
You know, I know that, you know, that, like, Friday, you're all, all, kind of, going on Friday, don't you?
They're, they're looking at, they're looking at Friday, but anyway.
Not always. Yes, uh, both groups generally takes off on Fridays.
But I think the only thing that I would be too, I see, a moment, to be present, see, and, and, and. So, switch around. Uh, we always say holiday, you came out here running after. So you switch around, those, uh, wrong, those those like the two days, you got, you got to play with the value of Christmas. That's something.
Yes, Senator, Mr. Parker, name that, please, for the record.
Okay, not sixty-one thirty-five, we, uh, I think he saw this real probably real quick. Now, the candidate administrator called the employees, you want to pay raises this year? Or you want to take a holiday? Ask that question, Joe. Let the employees decide. Simple switch.
Uh, I can do a poll.
Oh, it'd be easy. The boys have to plug in. You want to pay raises this year, or you will have an extra holiday? And you sound real hard. How you would do it? You get an answer real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for the, uh, you.
Uh, one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I would say, you know, obviously, we have a lot of days here, I mean, some things like these matters, or what we have to adopt, you know? If it's not feasible at this time to actually give the day off, could we at least recognize it? As we do with some other legal resolution that day, and, uh, recognize it, we're not going to be recognized, I mean, that's, that's the only way I can still do it.
Yeah, I think, remember. I think that we, we do, we, we, I mean, we, that's what I was looking for, I was trying to think what to do, and I was thinking that, this is, I'm like, this is what I'm saying.
Do we at least do that start there, and then is it the add-on? All in that, so we can do some more?
Because I'm only anybody that's getting the holiday whatsoever, I'm just trying to figure out how to make the day for, how to make, how to make a number for, you know, seventy-four hours at least, and it's a daily payroll, so that's the current challenge. Um, so it's not a little number, but we make, you know, more of a pro proclamation, and then, you know, for this year, the staff wanted to use the day, to have the end of the day, to do the proclamation, it's kind of, it's kind of, you know, part of, part of the technology.
Please, in the second technology, I'm, 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 I'm.
I'm just talking ideas out there, talking about, uh, uh, history.
We just don't talk so much about the holiday, the same, you know, so.
Oh, sorry. I was, I was talking him, I, I, we were talking about a, when you were talking to me, uh, I'm trying to get feedback, I think we got to talk about. No, 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 I'm, I'm, I mean, yeah, so what I was, that's what we were saying, and maybe we could do a proclamation, I could do for other things, proclaiming rights, or we decided for, 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 for.
That, that resolution may be an honor. We got, that's what we did last season. Everybody's just running, so, there's a lot, he said, though.
Yeah, that's a proclamation.
If you feel in light for some word.
He is, I'll take the reservation, I'll.
It's not, not just going to holiday, it's just where you stop with this, I mean. Pride sector, you don't give this.
A lot of this.
And so, I want to see where it's fair to give it to the county. And if you're proud of the taxpayer and people, it won't, won't take on these holidays. I was, I, I would say, where do you stop with this? Where, where are you going to stop? I'm going to the US for, I can.
I always appreciate, uh, what is it? You don't, you don't want here on that school? That's what we want here. You have a special from the board?
I don't know, we're, we're, we're very, this proclamation, at this point, I mean, let's, I'm thinking, I, I'd like to look at this kind of thing, they have, I would have another permission, where am I, I'm, we did five more days.
So my hearing consensus of, of asking, having attorneys to, of make proclamation, acknowledging, acknowledging a holiday, Juneteenth? Is that what my hearing?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
I mean, I'll read right here, four, five, or five, since.
Since, yeah, that's, that's where you, you, you should do that.
But we're not going to back, right? So next to you. Yeah, we don't, we don't need most of that.
No.
So, you're, you're, we're asking you, you're going to bring it back, and we're going to, we're going to bring it back. And then, Mr. Parker, do you have anybody who actually sold it, or what actually came in that confirmation? Is it? Okay. Alright, so, let's get back to this, uh, first, we can, we can. Uh, I would say, conditional denials, conditional, uh, uh, number eleven, administrative topics, and, and, uh.
Uh, just for record, um, uh, just to check what all of that, that, uh, the three pickup, uh, we can put the three on the rideaways, on the county road rideaways, currently, uh, through the twenty-eighth. Uh, the pickup will begin, uh, March twenty-eighth.
March.
I'm sorry, the twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-eighth, and the, and the, uh, actually, until June seventh, um, as I did before, but, uh, once we're done with the seventh, we'll do that. Uh, this is not for bank carrying, this is not for financial funds, this is not for contractors to deliver, and, and, uh, just, um, we charge people to call off and, and set, take off, uh, that, um, try to help people, that, uh, we have to be, uh, a little cautious in the, in the, in the.
Yeah, so, I would say, after the vote, um, May, May twenty-eighth, we do start to have a degree from the SLS, uh, turn this on, to the county, or at least get out to the, uh, county road, the rideaway, uh, does that include, or?
No, we believe county roads, all county.
Okay, all county roads.
All, all.
And the holiday, I do say.
All county roads.
Yes, it was, you said all county roads.
All county.
All public, all public county, okay. Uh, May twenty-eighth, you do that.
Good sir. Mr. Parker, please.
I was, I was contacted by, uh, one of the citizens that, he was, he was, this is an action, which, uh, he, he, he kind of, kind of wrote, he was on the state, uh, and he had quite a bit of, 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 of.
The state is not indicated, we're picking up any degree.
Saying?
The state is not indicated, we're picking up any degree. Also, um, from the rules at that point, you know, I'm not sure how you stand with it, but the great county road, it's true.
But, you know, I would say, this is, when you put some road, they, they would either pick up that before, you know, this, 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 or you continue to, uh, make it where that, uh, you have, uh, county road, put it.
As, as long as, I would make assumption, that if they're paying, they're not going to pick it up, if they're taking out their own, uh, another house, they're not going to pay that, so.
Yeah, it is another problem, they, they, somehow do it.
You too, um, I mean, the commissioner have that on that.
Yeah, on the week, I was, I was, again, today, the traffic safety meeting, they spoke to this, that I believe they are going to give them, so, by the way, I think they are, you know, and then one twenty-nine north, I seem to not be picking up, uh, we're going to, you might ask Mr. Parker in a moment, because she was in the, I was wondering, obviously, they would, they're going to stay right away, county road, and, or, anything, any county road. And, and that being said, I'm, like, you guys, I think, I don't know what order we're going to pick these up, but I think some of the dirt roads should be first, because of the little rideaway they have, and the amount of debris that's there, it's, it's still narrow, tricky to get through.
We do not have a voice.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm, I'm.
If they're paying for, I would, I would take, how far do they work, maybe?
Um, Mr. Parker, you said. So, seventy-sixth Street, uh, we asked you to work this for the CI, uh, expedition, to do the contract with the contractor, to, to start that project. County guys finished up, and we finished up this week on seventy-second, uh, seventy-second, and now the, 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 we'll do it to, uh, the ordinary next, and then that, that, the, the, uh, the, 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 project, we'll do it after that, so. The county guys did a great job, figuring the payment, and, uh, we're just, we're working, we've got a cross check, you can do it, the payment, the work, and the, the, the.
Speaker, uh, what you just said, I was up, very tangible.
So the commission, uh, approved that motion. We finished you up in seventy-second, which is not a, 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 additional.
Why that's over free, so we're on, on, we transport, we're on, we move.
So, we had projects that were hit down.
I'm just making like, what, what?
Um, and I just thought we were definitely to thank you, so, we did great. Um, we had a female come up, uh, Friday, uh, we went out to the bank, we looked at, I was stacking our degree and everything, um, to show what kind of team we've got, and how proud I am, being a, a candidate, which is going to show to the rest of people, having a good party. And, uh, since I last had a female, it's time to do something right, and we use model for the other part of the country, especially our areas, so, as we have the boys, the best, this group, and we really appreciate what they do out there.
I'm saying on your end, next time I stop, sack you.
We'll take it literally, and I think they're all close to it, makes it, I think they have to tag that, oh, they, oh, my.
Uh, the government with, uh, the election sites, uh, just, um, pushing everyone's attention, uh, there was a flag over, uh, they did not have a flag here, they had, had, it's, uh, uh, a, 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 a site, called the dis, and, uh, we had, now we have to flag, so, the holiday, and we're all looking around for every, every, uh, question site, so, I saw a couple today, and it was nice to have, we were all fighting.
Good.
Uh, we didn't talk to the vendor, we only told last week, or last time, about, so, the, uh, the three pickup, the, the trash pickup vendor, uh, they're going to do four cycles at the same rate, and, uh, so we're going to, and we, so, we, we, a few days, we do more motors, uh, usually, one motor is, you know, that's, so.
One of those small.
As soon as we can do the contract, I'm not, uh, it should have.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Again, we did have additional container, so that, uh, people was watching all the videos, and the audience that, uh, need a job, uh, they vote, do these part-time jobs, they, 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 you know, the house, they vote to have them, or part-time, or some type of side, somewhere. But, uh, but, uh, anyway, we did have additional, so the website has it posted, and we're urging that reply. The, 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 uh, on June fifth, uh, at nine thirty, and at city, and, uh, the dress, uh, seven, nine seventy-one, but two all, two one fifty, uh, there's some compensation there, so.
So, can you please, so, they just see that, obviously, the, the, the. And that is, Commissioner White, and, uh, Commissioner Moll, on that, for.
The thing that we tasked with is, uh, finding an extra personal server, uh, Mr. Kraus, and, uh, I've been discussing, trying to find a business leader that maybe is involved with both counties, uh, but, uh, just to be plain, think about, um, personally, you know, throughout the nation, as well as we do, so, um, it would be really fifth, so, so, so. I would thank the park crew and the sound house for getting set up here tonight, um, and you were, you were, you were, I won't have to work with you, especially, but it's appreciated, the work you did this whole time, and, uh, just happy, and more than, and there was, so, well, about, uh, some, uh, that, 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 all, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, one, one.
Go ahead, you have one.
One more thing, uh, we're in the legislature now, uh, we're looking at several things, we're looking at equipment, uh, analyze, reanalyze, will be released, will be by, uh, trying to look at either plan cycles, and look at, um, what else do we need, sort of, efficiencies with our rolling, and, and we've talked before about, uh, the rose, the person, and is that, uh, contractor's spray, is it, is it a different type of overs, mulching bits, what is it, it looks like it is, uh, in the third way is, cleaning back, so you can maintain, you know?